The mayor is excused and we will start our first budget work session for the 2020 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, pro tempore members of council. As you may recall, at your last meeting, the staff presented the manager's recommended budget. At this point in the process, it turns to the council and the staff is here in a position to try to serve and assist as best we can to make any potential changes, amendments, clarifications you may wish on the route to getting an approved budget. Today is your first budget work session and you have a series of budget notes and for the, maybe the audience that's listening, just a quick explanation. Budget notes are items that the council has asked for prior to this point in the process. They are ideas or questions or proposals the council members have and the staff report outlines what that is, what are the potential impacts, and then the projected costs and alternatives for you to consider on how you may wish to fund it. So for several of these items you're going over today, they would require the council to make, form that into an amendment, which then you can use to amend the manager's recommended budget for ultimate approval. Again, just as a reminder to the public, tomorrow at seven is the public hearing and then you continue to have work sessions every Monday in June at four o'clock until you're finished. And so really, we're here to help answer questions from you. Mary Vigu from Budget Management Services can walk through each of the budget notes if you wish and staff for each of those items is available.
Okay. Before, first of all, any council members have any particular ones in particular they have questions on? That's kind of, I was gonna ask you, I was gonna ask about number two and number three for clarification, which is the Old East Raleigh area plan and the Dorothy Dix Edge area plan. Those two can be done without any budget changes at this time?
They would require the use of additional funding because currently in the CIP, we have about $300,000 budgeted for area plans and so that could be used for one or the other of the projects, but if both, if council wanted to consider both, the other options were outlined in the memo in terms of the ability to use council contingency, current year or next year.
Okay. So it's $300,000 that's budgeted to add, got it. Okay. I know with the Old East Raleigh area plan, this is one, this is something that is a neighborhood that is adjacent to downtown, something that we'll really need and I'd like to talk to fellow council members about getting this one moved forward because there have been some pressures already in this area as far as development, some that may not necessarily complement our plan and the community's plan for growth in this area. And that's $75,000 that I will be looking to move forward.
Can we comment on the merits of the plan? I think it is a very important plan. It is one that was put in place quite a while back and I think it is due for updating particularly with all the revitalization of downtown and all the growth that that's attracted and all the concerns about gentrification and dislocation. This is a perfect time perhaps to review what the community's vision is for that area. In terms of funding, I would say I don't want to completely spend up all of next year's planning money. FY 2020 CIP area and corridor study money, I'd like to look at some of the other funding sources that staff had proposed.
I agree, I agree. And I was gonna provide that information to you all, I just, I ran out and left that sheet, so I'll be getting it to you.
May I suggest that we ask Mary to walk through each one and her explanation and then move forward?
That's fair.
Sure, we'll go, we can go through each one. So the first item on the agenda was just an overview that kind of outlined all the different funding sources, since there were multiples, so we were all, as we went through each of the budget notes, and so that's what that first memo is. The next two, as we've already mentioned, are the area plans that came up. One is in the amount of 75,000 and that is the Old East Raleigh area plan and the other one is the Dorothy Dix Edge area plan and that one's at 300,000. And staff is here to answer specific questions related to those, if you have them.
So I have a couple of questions about any of these area plans and that is, are these to be completed within one year or are these going to be completed over several years?
I would look to planning staff to talk about the timing of these plans.
So while he's coming up, Mr. Cox, I would say that as it relates to the Dix Park area plan, one of the things that we'd want to make sure that we do, and we've talked about this in depth, is we have naturally occurring affordability in the area and we're gonna need density in that area, both to support the park as well as to make sure that we are looking forward from a visionary way in how we keep affordability over there as well as building density for the park. So it's a very ambitious project and the scope is big. So speaking of timing, it was something Ken can answer, but that's the reason we asked for it.
Sure. So I would say that of the two efforts, the Old East Raleigh was, is a simpler and smaller area. The questions are important, but we think that is reasonable to think that we might be able to wrap the bulk of the planning within the budget year. For Dix Edges, my best estimation, and of course, you know, we haven't put this out and scoped it out and don't have a contract with anyone to do it, is that while a lot of the work can be done within the fiscal year, we don't anticipate to have it fully completed until later, probably into early the next fiscal year. And of course, you know, any plan is not entirely done until it's presented to council and there's a vote to adopt and move it forward. Typically, even after the bulk of the work is done, that process adds a few extra months onto it. So I would not think that we would be there on Dix Edges and we might be there on Old East Raleigh if we're aggressive.
Okay, thank you.
So can I just, Ken, while you're up here? Just, you talked about the differences between Old East and Dorothy Dix Edge and I think of the Old East Raleigh one as being more of a plan about incremental change and preserving community character versus Dix being transformational while also trying to maintain obviously some of the character and affordability in the area. That's obviously a transformational plan is gonna be a lot more work than one that's more about incremental and conservation.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a somewhat fair statement. I don't, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves because we don't know exactly what the Dix process will produce since we haven't conducted the process, but certainly along the Dix, should we expect the Spring Hill campus to someday look a lot different than it does today since it's mostly empty? We anticipate that market pressure is going to create change of one form or another in some of the adjacent neighborhoods and this is all about managing that. In the Old East Raleigh plan, you know, we have an area plan there, it's now about 13 years old, going on 13 years old. I remember it was just wrapping up when I first came to the city in 2006 and the market is way different than it was then. There are new development sites that have come to the fore that weren't, really weren't looked at in any detail and of course, then there's also the proximity to the BRT investment. But you're correct, the probably, the plan is not for wholesale transformation of the neighborhood, but it's looking at some discrete opportunities particularly closer to the transit service as to what are appropriate land uses for those and getting out ahead of the market on that question.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions from those two?
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Ken.
Moving on to the next item was regarding Blue Ridge Corridor Alliance and if you recall, as part of the budget, there is about $18,000 included from the Office of Economic Development and Innovation and this was a request for an additional $22,000, which would bring them up to their previous year funding level. If there's any questions on that one.
Well, Blue Ridge Corridor is important to us and making sure that we keep the advocacy group working on behalf of the corridor as it relates to the economic development we want in the area would, I think, be important to fund. Dr. Stewart is our voice out there as it relates to what they're trying to do to get economic prosperity in the area.
Yeah, and I think they're also doing a nice job looking into density and affordability, so I think that's really important too.
And to that, I'll add environmental sustainability and transit. So yes, they are definitely working to further all of our comp plan goals for sustainable growth and development in that area and it's a lot of work and I appreciate what they're doing.
Quick question on this one. Can you remind me why we didn't fully fund their request? Was that a percentage?
No, it was based on historical. So last year, at this time after we presented a budget, council added that funding again and when we moved them as a contract for services, we went back like we did for the other agencies to our historical funded amount. And so historically, we have funded them at that $18,000 level.
I think also, Nicole, just to add a little bit more information on that, I think the group has been looking and has come to the council before asking to become an MSD district and for all kinds of reasons for where they were in the process and what our MSD policy was, we didn't feel like they were there yet, but they have been advocating for that so that they could become sort of self-supporting in their own way through taxation and we just hadn't gotten there yet. So this is a way to keep them moving forward in their advocacy role until what time happens for them to perhaps come in MSD.
So maybe a little bit more specifically to your point.
He's on their board.
Right. Sitting in the meeting, they said, well, staff has chosen to, last time we asked for 40K, this time staff has chosen to budget 18,000 through economic development and so they asked for the remainder 22, so the 22 is their ask.
And then, just as a note, the second part to that budget note did reference the notion of becoming an MSD, there's been lots of discussion and so for council's consideration, it was out there for staff to complete a study on that, but it would be at council's direction, so we wanted to also put that in front of you. The next item is regarding sidewalk projects and transit shelters and there was a lot of information in a few pages regarding the various efforts associated with sidewalks, both initiated, city-initiated and petition, and then along with our transit shelter process. And so, and then we provided some options there for you and staff is here to answer any questions on that if you have anything.
I definitely had some questions as far as the 21, let me see this part again. The 21 in queue, if I can have probably someone from transportation, from the information we received, there's 21 in queue, but citizens initiated, but funding available by 2024?
So there, so the ones that are in queue are funded and will be initiated through 2024. If you, if you moved about a million dollars, you could accelerate them slightly a year because there's a gap there in '23, but what's in queue right now is funded. But if we get any more petitions, they are unfunded at this moment, but right now what is in queue is funded.
So here's where I'm confused. In our transit and transportation meeting last week and we talked about sidewalks, we were informed that of the citizen-initiated projects, of the ones that we currently have, if, I think the number was actually 18, that those could be, those are two, there's a two-year gap, which means we're talking 2021, so I'm...
So I'm talking about a five-year CIP they're funded, that's probably where the gap comes from.
It's, it's a two-year pipeline of development.
Right.
So that's, that's where I think we are a little off. So the projects that we have are taking us, the ones that are in queue now are taking us two to three years to develop based on resources that we have in hand and then the just in the community engagement processes that we've got. So it takes us that long to bring a project today to, to the street to basically put a shovel in the ground on that.
Okay.
So can I ask, following up on that, I guess the, sort of raises the question is if there's a two-year pipeline delay, but that isn't to say if we added more money to the pipeline that they wouldn't come, they'd still take two years, but they would, there could be more of them in process and getting through the pipeline.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, all right, thanks.
So a question, in the, so which prototype are we actually talking about here? Is it the one that's the more mainstream or the one that looks like it came from outer space or which one?
Oh, we're talking about sidewalks.
Sidewalks.
I'm talking about bus shelters.
Okay, we're still on sidewalks.
We're still on sidewalks.
And also, are our bus shelters, are they, do they have, any of them have lights in them or do we depend on street lighting?
There, there are some lights in some of the shelters, yes. There's a little LED strip.
What determines which ones get lighted and which ones are not?
Whether or not there's street lights nearby.
So as far as the sidewalks and the queuing, I'm trying to, I'm still trying to close the three-year gap because I have a funding year of 2024 of saying, is that saying where money's available currently if we did nothing?
That is correct, but it, it's a question of both funding and ability to complete projects, so there's two pieces there.
So the ability to complete the 18, is it 18 or 21?
21.
Okay, so the 21 in queue right now, are those funded?
Yes, but over time, so if you want to do them faster, you're running out of money.
Over time, right, okay, okay.
I think it comes down to capacity though.
Correct, that's correct.
Right, so what, what's the capacity to do more?
So we asked this question earlier of engineering, were you there? Go ahead.
No, I wasn't there when you asked it of engineering.
Back to you.
Back to you. Back to me?
Yes.
So, speaking with Blair, I think he's here somewhere, he talked about that they would need to come back with a plan for city council over the next little while about if you accelerated, what that would look like in terms of staff resources and availability to move them along, but also recognize it's also a lengthy process due to several other factors, including, you know, citizen engagement and things like that. So it's more than just the funding and some of that other.
So even putting more money into it would not necessarily produce sidewalks at a faster rate?
That is correct. I mean, it's with our current process and our current, our current resources, we can look at that and bring a plan back to you to see what options we have to accelerate it, but that would be, that would take us a little bit of time to do.
Okay.
And I guess, so that's, so far we've been talking about citizen-initiated projects, 21 in the queue, but then there are city-initiated where we have a 2015 priority list and then we have a bigger group that didn't make, 80 projects that didn't make the priority list and are you saying that even if we, likewise, if we added money to accelerate production, it would still be staffing?
We would still be a matter of staffing, a matter of us getting things to bid and getting the community engagement around those projects.
Okay. All right. And as far as shelters and getting more shelters out, what, because we never, we didn't talk about that in committee meetings, so as far as the shelters, it says there's 19 currently funded by our wait transit plan with others and this is based on the 25 average daily boardings and off-boardings by that goal, but I know we also have exemptions for certain areas.
The numbers that you have there represent what would be, what would be eligible for a shelter under the 25 boardings a day. If we wanted to revisit that, it would obviously impact the numbers of shelters. That could be, again, something we would, we could do, that's one of the recommendations that we could look at that and come back, but that would take us a little bit of time to pull together and we would certainly want your feedback on that.
I think if you had questions on shelters.
Yeah, go on back to the lighting again. So what's your minimum foot candles that you're looking for in a shelter?
That I don't know, but my guess it would be around two, something that you could see the palm of your hand, something you'd be able to see, that's typically what we would use for like a more urban street lighting process, so, but let me come back to you with that number.
Okay. Yeah, I think the concern for maybe some of, since we're trying to get more folks to use our system here, about security and, and maybe that's not quite enough with candles.
We can look at it, one of the things we need to be cautious about is creating a really bright spot and then the contrast, everything around it seems really dark, so we need to find kind of a good balance there so we don't, we don't create an island of light that seemingly may be surrounded where people feel that's not safe any longer and so just even the walk to it would feel a little less safe, but let me come back to you with that number.
Okay, thank you.
Kind of follow up on bus shelters. So we have 19 funded that meet the 25 average daily riders, that, and it's 570,000.
Correct.
And that money is all coming from wait transit plan funds?
I believe, yes.
Obviously the half-cent sales tax, okay. And then we have, I think there was a recommendation or an option of asking GRTA to go back and look at a, a different policy on, you know, maybe lowering it from 25 down to 20 or something, I don't know what it would be. And then if we were interested in accelerating the production of these shelters in likely locations, obviously, where there's a lot of riders, if we did that, would that push us out past the budget process to get a new policy or a policy recommendation back from GRTA?
It would likely do that, but again, that would be something I would want to look at in kind of context and bring a recommendation back.
If we did that, if we accelerated past the 570,000 that we've got in the budget, would those additional funds still come from some reservoir of wait transit plan funds that are out there and available? In other words, we're taking in $100 million a year on the wait transit plan for Wake County.
So currently, in the budget there, in the CIP, in the five-year CIP, there's about $7.6 million for bus shelter improvements. And so that will fund, staff anticipates that sufficient funding to complete the shelters at the stops that were recommended with the 25 rule. And there's some additional stops you'll see on the other column where the ones that aren't required that they've been able to do as well. So there is some available funding, but the recommendation or the option was to go back and look at that 25 feet rule or 25 boardings rule.
We've been able to incorporate some portion of the work when we've done larger street improvement projects, the PAD.
Okay, so let me try a different tack. If we went back to GRTA and said, give us your proposal for an accelerated construction policy, could we, after the budget, come back and say we still have general capital reserve funds that we could draw on after the budget was finalized?
Yes.
To apply to that? Okay, all right, thank you.
I would be interested in seeing a report on what would it look like if we were going to 20 average daily boardings a day and in, kind of in that report as well, I'm wondering if we could see our policy and information about benches and what's required for those because I know we have some stops that don't even have that and so just kind of a full comparison. I, for me, after budget is fine in looking ahead, but I'd be very interested in that policy.
We can certainly do that.
Actually, I have a slight approach and maybe we could amend that request, of course, this is after the budget, take out those that average 25 or more off the list, look at the rest of the stops, get an average from that data and then based on that average, use that number to determine, because 20 may be too high, you know, and if we say 10, it may be too low, not knowing the data, you know, I think having an average of those less than 25.
So an average of the boardings per stop?
Correct, per stop and then using that average number to determine, I think would give us a good benchmark too on how many shelters we need to touch.
So what's the trigger?
The trigger, so, so of, of, of the rest of, say we have 100 stops left that average less than 25 and that number averaged, say is 13, say 14, so 14 would be the number, we would say how many stops average 14 or more that we pick from?
Percentage wise.
Percentage wise, because 20 may be, it may not be a good, yeah, we're taking a number and throwing it at you instead of looking at something that's kind of data-driven.
Certainly.
Well, but you're saying that is a starting point to send it to GRTA to let them come up with their recommendation?
Right. Okay.
You can certainly do that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this item?
No.
So the next item was a request regarding a disparity study in terms of understanding the definition, the cost, the process, and so that has been provided along with options if this is something council wishes to consider this year.
So I brought this forward, I think I've been told that it's been many years since we've had one and I knew that it would be something we needed, I did not realize that the cost might be as. I did not realize that the cost might be as significant. And I assume that part of that is the scope that we're looking at. So I assume we need more time to figure out what that scope looks like in the future. So I'm willing, if the council agrees, it's important if we could look at this for 2021 in our budget moving forward. And then having time to really work with the management team to decide what scope we need to do in order to achieve the goals we want to achieve with the disparity study.
I definitely support that, that move and us moving forward. I think it gives us time to do it right.
Right. Thank you.
If I could, Councilmember Crowder, I, I think that's an approach. Also, if you may recall, you, you saw where Nikki Jones from Housing Neighbor came forward. We've hired some additional staff who have just come on board. And so it would probably put us in a much better position in terms of preparation for the study to know that's our goal, and we can use that staff time this year to gear up for it. And then we'll be better prepared. So that's sort of, we're interpreting that from this direction to get ready.
Yeah, get ready, it's coming.
Get ready. Yeah.
And should. Thank you.
The next item is regarding the Fair Housing Hearing Board. It was requested for some information about what it would take to hire the, the staff to support this expanding. And so that memo provides that information along with the proposed staff needed and options for funding.
My, my main question is, I noticed that we're talking about funding it out of our contingency funding?
Yes, for, for, for next year. And then we would need to find a long-term funding source in the budget process in twenty-one would be what we would have to do.
Okay, and so next year we're talking about a hundred and fifty, but we are also tapping into fiscal year nineteen contingency funding of eighty-nine, eight-fifty? Okay.
Yes, we were trying to fund this completely, yes.
So I have a question, kind of for this city attorney. I know you've been looking into this matter from a, I guess from a timeframe as far as procedures and policy to give the board the authority to see the hearings. Where do we stand? Is that something that would be done within the next fiscal year?
Here's what, we had to do a lot of digging into past minutes and whatnot. And what we've discovered is that we would need local authority from the General Assembly and after that approval from HUD in order to have a board that had actual decision-making authority. There, there's some indication that before nineteen ninety-five, that they might hear a complaint and do some mediation-type work. But we've never had the authority to actually adjudicate cases with subpoena power and the ability to have some kind of penalty. In order to do that, HUD has got to determine that our procedures are substantially the equivalent of what their procedures are. And one of my lawyers, Brandon, found out that we had actually asked HUD in nineteen ninety to have that authority. And they said, because you don't have subpoena power and you don't have the ability to impose any penalties, that we're not going to give you that authority unless you go to the General Assembly. And apparently, there was, that was presented to the council in two thousand and two, and it was split four-four as to whether to ask for that authority. So that was a learning experience for me. So I guess the short answer is, we've got to get, if you want them to have teeth and decision-making authority and you want them to decide cases, we'll need to go to the General Assembly, get authority, and then ask HUD if they will certify the city to hear those cases.
Okay.
So is it premature then to staff up until that is resolved?
I would say so. I think that if five members of council want to move forward with it, then the next thing would be to find out sort of, there's no way we could do it this session. Because they're getting ready to close down at the General Assembly in the next couple of weeks. So it would be something that we would need to raise in the next session. And we could do some homework in the meantime and sort of see what the temperature is on that. So we're happy to do that. And again, this has taken, Brandon Poole from our office has spent a lot of time and read a lot of documents to get us to this place. So I appreciate that.
And they're in long session now, so that session is short session, and they wouldn't come back until March roughly, unless, unless they do something different.
Right.
So I think.
There are some too. There was one local act, I think, or one or two that cities have had that we could sort of piggyback on, if you will, that give the authority to, you know, a number of cities, and you could just maybe stick probably on the end of it.
Okay.
If I could, Mr. Branch. So actually, to your point, Mr. Cox, we do have some various options in terms of looking at operating costs and adding positions mid-year. Obviously, it helps if it's not, you know, the first month of the new fiscal year. But I, I do think later on, if, if that's something that council wishes to do and you're having to get all the approvals and get ready, we're going to have a lot of lead time before the actual expense on an operating piece hits. So we could bring back options if you decided to do that at the time.
Okay, and then, and then so that would allow us to not have to worry about adding this to the budget at this time.
Right.
Right. With that.
Certainly, we would add it, if we move forward, we would have to add it in the next budget cycle.
That, that's what I would suggest. You know, there's going to be, to the city attorney's point, there's a lot of external approvals to that. So we would have some pretty far-out notification about when that point might occur. And we can bring options to you at that time, would be what I would suggest.
Then I guess I would make the recommendation that we not add this money to the budget for 2020, but proceed as you described.
Yeah, definitely. Okay. So of the seven, number six, I know we said we will put on hold. Number seven's on hold. Sidewalks and transit, I think we're waiting for more information. So it's on semi-hold, which leaves us with the Old East, Dorthia Dix and Blue Ridge.
So you say on hold, it's actually being withdrawn?
Well, withdrawn for this year's budget.
Right.
Yeah, so six and seven are being, are withdrawing for this year's budget consideration. With five, I'm assuming, based on the dollars amount and timeframe, we'll probably be withdrawing as well, but I don't want to assume.
But only in lieu of a process that involves RTA and, and other stakeholders? And looking at some of the same funding sources here, but they would be sources, if we chose to do it, would not be part of this budget, they'd be a separate.
And then also, I think there's some money coming from the Wake County Transit Plan. Did we say seven point one?
Seven point six.
Yeah, seven point six for shelters.
For shelters.
Okay.
And remember, recall, when I talk about CIP numbers, I am referencing a five-year, but you only adopt the first year. And so there's potential to look at this as part of the CIP process next year and to make some changes then, then as well, so.
Again, so, so the Wake Transit Plan in terms of budgeting for spending, it's not like there's a, a large revenue surplus out there that we can say, we want to accelerate. There would have to be a negotiation within that Wake Transit Plan funding, CIP, to accelerate bus shelter funding?
I would, I would need to get someone here from Wake Transit to answer that specific question.
But we don't have to answer that today because we're going to.
Let me, I'll help with that. Mr. Stevenson, what, you're right, the amount that we're getting from the half-cent sales tax for Wake Transit is allocated in the budget. If you wanted to go beyond the scope of what's currently in the CIP, then you would have to add some supplemental general revenues, which is the, when you mentioned the capital reserves or something like that. And you could do that at a later time.
Well, I'm also saying, could we amend future CIPs to accelerate that way?
Yes, you could. You could reallocate within the, within the revenue stream.
So, so could we take the three thou, three hundred thousand in the corridor study pot of money and use that for the Dix area plan and then use council contingency for the Old East area plan and for Blue Ridge? And that would still leave about a hundred and forty thousand in contingency for this coming year?
So can I respond to that?
Sure.
I hate taking away all of next year's uncommitted planning funds. I'd rather look at some of these other sources of revenue, particularly the, the general capital reserve funds.
So let's do this. I think we've narrowed it down to at least those three. Let's have those conversations. We have a public hearing scheduled for tomorrow. And then we have another meeting a week from today. And then we can, is there anything you need from us today as far as these items for direction?
And there is another item on here. If council has any additional items they want us to look at or questions about.
Yep, yeah.
And I don't know if it helps with the decision on the three hundred thousand if to hear from planning on what their plans were, if they had any plans for that funding. So I don't know if that would help.
Well, and it's, I mean, at the end of the day, it may be no difference whatsoever. We'll, we'll come up with some planning needs next year, and we'll still be looking for where the money's going to come from, whether it's in this pot or that pot, so.
Okay. Item number eight, the last item, are there any other items from city council members to discuss?
I would, I do have a question. And I apologize that this is coming at the last minute like this, but the Falls North Small Area Plan that we did has been extremely well-received. And the Wake, number of people in the Wakefield community are asking if a small area plan could be done from the Neuse River all the way to the Capitol Boulevard. And I believe the Falls North Small Area Plan, we spent thirty thousand dollars was the budget for that?
I reckon like so, around that.
Okay, so I would like to ask if we could get some information about what it would cost to do a comparable small area plan for Falls of Neuse from the Neuse River to Capitol Boulevard?
For this year's budget?
It's about the same distance, maybe a mile and a half.
Is that for this year's budget, as in?
Right, if, if it would be possible. Or how we could possibly fund some activity related to that in 2020.
I'm think, just thinking from hearing this now, I think first we would need staff to pull the information for us to review it and then decide, I don't know if we, if we'll be, if it would make this year's budget, but it kind of goes back to the conversation that Councilman Stevenson mentioned. You know, by us having some money left, at least we talked about one fifty.
He said we're having some money left for planning activities, so I'd like to throw this forward as a planning activity.
Right, we may, we may not, we don't know yet. But this could be an item that we could probably decide later on. But I think making the request for the information is, is valid.
Right, that's, that's what I'm doing, is making a request for some information.
Typically, when this request comes on the table, we'll have a budget note completed and ready to go out Thursday with the agenda items. So you'll have this information Thursday in time for next week.
Oh, you're, you're great.
And if I could, could, Mr. Branch, to, to Mr. Cox's point, one of the questions you may want to remember in terms of the Falls Plan was the thirty thousand limited the scope. And then later there was some concerns about the scope not including some other things. So from that cost perspective, you may want, we may, the council may wish to examine what's in that scope. We don't want to have to go back through the concerns if, if it's fully scoped. So that may be part of what we put in the memo, is maybe some thresholds about what would be included so that if we capture the scope of what you want.
Right, that would be fine. And I, I'm guessing it would probably be similar to what we did with the other.
Yeah, so that's probably closer to that, I'm guessing, of course, without talking to anybody. But it's probably closer, fully scoped up into that sixty, seventy thousand dollar range as opposed to thirty, but then that may get you what you want.
Right.
Okay, so we good there? Okay, any other items?
Yes, thank you. So the Raleigh Parks Parking Division has done a really good job of reaching out to stakeholders, engaging in the three main parking areas we have, Glenwood South, Hillsborough Street and Downtown. And there was a set of recommendations about hours and rates. And it makes really good parking sense. But going out and hearing the public, on the Hillsborough Street recommendation, all was well. But downtown Raleigh and Glenwood Avenue would like a little bit more evaluation as it relates to the parking hours. Parking will have new tools this year to study the overall parking utilization. And it would be good to have more data on this matter to assist us with further decision-making. So here's my motion. I move that we adopt staff's recommendation for the all-street parking. However, the suggested meter hours for downtown and Glenwood South parking should be amended to only extend to six PM as opposed to eight, addressing stakeholders' concerns. Further, I'd like to ask the parking staff to review evening on-street parking usage in downtown and Glenwood South over the next year. This data will help us determine future changes to our on-street parking hours. We can use this information to revisit this issue and be better informed for the FY 2021 budget. That's my motion.
Second.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
How does that impact the budget?
So Mary, do you want it? You do it, Mary, those are your, it's your job. I got it, but you do it.
It was about a two hundred and forty-four thousand dollar revenue impact, but it, it does not have an operational impact on the budget. That money was transferred to capital for future needs, and so there's not a major impact on the parket budget, parking budget this year.
So could you explain why you want this? I'm not sure, I understood what you said, but I'm not, what's, what's the logic behind it?
So I think the downtown, the DRA areas, which are Glenwood South and downtown, think that moving it from, from six to eight will be a disruption for the consumers that use it, like restaurants or other folks who come in, and that there's not enough, they haven't had enough time to really educate all the folks in their area as to what this would mean. And our parking staff believes that with the new data we're going to be able to get coming forth, we'll have a better plan to show them that it could, it does or it doesn't not affect their businesses. And it would give us a better plan as to whether eight PM would work versus six. So it's just, so it's just a slight modification, just in hours, not in the rate or anything for the deck or the on-street. It's just a modification to make the DRA have some time to work with their folks.
So I have one more question, Ruffin, and you might answer it.
Okay.
I'm trying to help.
Right. This motion that was made, is this something that can be, should be done here or tomorrow?
I would, I would recommend that you go ahead and do it here if you're comfortable, because then we'll, we'll recalculate the numbers for the ordinance that we'll send out on Thursday. This, this is, this would be helpful.
So this wasn't done in a silo, this was done with the parking staff?
I wanted to try to help a little bit, answer your question, Councilmember Thompson. And we appreciate the collaboration also with our partners, with the Downtown Raleigh Alliance, the parking folks and the council members on this. Part of it is a timing thing that's occurred. So we went out and did a lot of stakeholder meetings and discussions, and it ran up against our recommended budget document balancing. And so probably if we had gotten this feedback a month or so ago, we probably would have approached the presentation a little bit differently. But some of that feedback came through after our recommendation. So at this point, we've made our recommendations, and we need the council to make the change. But we've worked through it and think that it's helpful to try to respond to some of the feedback we've gotten from the stakeholders.
So let me ask you this, Kay, how, how long do they, how much time do they need? I mean, it's kind of open-ended.
Well, no, I ask you, my motion was the information they provide to us that we re-look at this for FY budget 2021.
Don't you think in six months, we could, they could come, that's enough time?
Well, I might ask the parking staff their thoughts about that, since I'm not a parking engineer. And they've been working with the different groups.
Good afternoon. So starting, beginning of next fiscal year, we'll have access to new tools like LPR and better meters and really the ability to just understand occupancy along these corridors outside of just the eight-to-five metered time. That's going to allow us to be able to really understand what's happening after the meter shut off. We'll have access to that starting hopefully in August. And then we would need some time to go gather data after that to be able to present that to the community. So we probably need a little bit of time throughout next fiscal year to just understand what that is, to evaluate it and then present it.
Okay.
So a little bit of time, is that six months or what?
Hard to know, a little bit, without having the tools in hand and, and not being able to see what that's, what that's moving to over time. I think, I think essentially by, by, by the time we have this conversation next year for, for 2021 budget, we'll certainly have an opportunity to both gather, analyze that data, and then present that data to stakeholders. stakeholders.
Yeah.
So I'd like to make a friendly amendment if we could. Let's say six months, and then after six months, if that's not enough time, then we'll grant them more time.
A motion was made, is there a second?
Yeah, I seconded.
To his friendly?
No, I seconded the case.
Right, yeah.
So now you're looking for, well, we need to hear from Kay whether she's going to accept it.
Are you going to accept it, Kay?
Well, I just...
Because I had a question before, I wanted to ask.
Well, let me just ask one question. I'm willing to work with any council members about what we need, but to the parking staff, since you've been doing this, do you, based on what you just said, my question to you is, does six months give you the time you need? Because it's a new tool we'll be putting in place, and I don't think that new tool is starting to fall, correct?
Correct.
So my question is, if you're rolling the tool out in the fall, does January or whatever that is, give you enough time to get the data you need in order to make a good rational decision and come back to council?
It would be, it would be a short sample size, would be my concern. And so, so six months seems like a short timeline, and it will have enough data to really come back and meaningfully understand what's happening in that evening hours.
So one, one thing I want to say, we're actually, if we, if we're doing this based on the motion to next budget fiscal year 2021, we're really, it's not even going to be twelve months, it's really going to be like nine. Because by the time you start the budget process and come back to us with data, you're going to, they're probably going to fulfill your six months part, because they start looking at numbers with March and, and April when you're working on the budget.
Just one thing, Councilor Thompson, and to bring everybody up to speed, we're not going to have new meters fully throughout all of Raleigh until the end of the year, December. So really looking at the January to May timeframe of this time next year to, to have that data. So I just want to bring everybody up to speed on that.
So with that said, Mr. Thompson, I'm not sure...
I was going to say, I will withdraw my friendly motion and not in an unfriendly fashion.
I appreciate it.
All right. So it's been moved improperly second of the budget motion for parking. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, either the same right motion carries.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other items? Anything from?
Just as a reminder, the city manager mentioned that this Thursday, as part of your agenda packet, we'll send out the additional budget note that was requested today. You'll also get a packet with the ordinances associated with the budget, because as, as was mentioned earlier, we will continue to have budget work sessions until council adopts a budget. So we'll provide them at every meeting after the public hearing tomorrow night. So you will get a, a packet on Thursday that includes the fees and, and the budget ordinance and those pieces associated with it. So that will go out Thursday as well. I just didn't want you surprised on Thursday when you saw all that.
All right. Thank you. All right. City manager? Madam attorney? All right. We are adjourned.